Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Albany County Commission Meeting for September 17th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Commissioner Joe.
Present.
Commissioner Barbara.
Here.
Commissioner Gosar also here. If you could stand and join me through the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is a public hearing, and we have one tonight. It's the Albany County Grants Office Policy and Procedure Handbook. Take any questions in the room or any comments for or against it for the Albany County Grants Office Policy and Procedures Handbook. How about online? Anybody online would like to make the comment for or against the Albany County Grants Office Policy and Procedure Handbook? Last call for public comments for the Albany County Grants Office Policy and Procedure Handbook, online and in the room. Commissioners, entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussions? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item four, comments from the public. If anybody would like to make a comment, we'll take them in the room here and then we'll go online. Yeah, but how about online? Anybody want to make a public comment online? All right, last call for public comments, online and in the room. Commissioners, entertain a motion to close the public comment.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item five, disclosures. Commissioner Joe, any disclosures?
Yes, item 11.
All righty. And disclosures, what's your?
I have none.
And I have none also. Six, considerations of changes on the agenda. Bailey or Kayla? I see Jennifer, you're online. Do you have any changes on the agenda, Jennifer?
I don't, Commissioner Gosar. Thank you.
Okay. Item seven is approval of the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion for item seven. You may pull out whatever you would like or do it however you would.
Well, I was just looking at the consent, I mean, at the zoning certificates. And I was a little bit concerned about the ones that are possibly over the APAS as far as the principal structure and accessory building on Sherman Hill Road. Jennifer, is that something we need to look at, that we pull this part out?
I am just looking at it here. Which one was it?
It's the maelstroms.
My, I would assume that if David has them as a zoning certificate on here, that within that zoning certificate, everything is in compliance. I'll pull it up, his packet of information that he has here, and look just to be sure. But it should be that whatever zoning certificate they've applied for has the appropriate setbacks, has all the engineering, all the things that have gone through for that lot.
I would assume so as well, but sometimes that passes without being noticed, so I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, I will look it up here just really quick and let you know if I see anything concerning.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to look at for the consent agenda? Jennifer, not to rush you, we can pull those out and then come back, I believe. Is that true?
Yes, that's, you can do that if you'd like to do that, if you want to pull them out really quickly while I look.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So you want to wait to make a motion and go back to it?
Yeah. Well, I don't want to rush her, but I don't know what.
Well, no, I'm just saying, do you want to wait? I used to say, do you want to go to the regular agenda and come back and approve the consent agenda after she's able to look? Or do you want to pull them, make a motion to pull them out, and then if they're good, then we're going to have to make a motion to put them back in?
Okay.
I don't know. Which is easier for you?
Probably just to wait to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
So just move on?
Move on, and then we can go back to it if that's okay. If that's all right, Jennifer.
That'll work. Just fine.
Do that. We'll move to the regular agenda. So item eight, present for approval, amendment one to the right-of-way grant, temporary use permit, serial number W Y W 192138 between the Board of Albany County Commissioners and the Bureau of Land Management for the Pilot Hill Recreation Area. Sarah, good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time this evening. As you know, we're making tremendous progress on the trail system in the Pilot Hill area. Part of the 10 miles of trails that we'd hoped to build this summer do extend into the B L M portion of the property and impact the right-of-way agreement that we have with the B L M. One of the trails, part of the route that we had hoped to use, experienced significant erosion damage this summer due to the heavy rains that we've had. And in looking at that route, we realized that we would be much better off keeping visitors away from that area and reroute a portion of Trail 20 through the B L M section so that we can mitigate the erosion controls, work with the Emery Rivers Conservation District and be ultimate stewards of the land in this process. Because of that, we need to amend the right-of-way agreement. We had a 50-foot on either side of the center line of the trails with the B L M for some flexibility in trail construction, but this is more than 200 feet out of that. So we'll be, we did meet with the B L M on the property. They are in agreement that this is a good decision, but we do need to go with your permission through the process of filing an amendment to the right-of-way agreement.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody questions for Sarah?
Go ahead. Did you have something? So what is that final number as far as distance?
Yes, I apologize. I am not great, I'm great, not great with mapping. And I thought that it was 1,300 feet, but it's actually 1,119 feet. That is within the B L M portion of the property. The entire trail itself is about 3,000 feet. It's 2395 in state leased property and then another 1,119 through the B L M.
Thank you, Sarah, because I would see different.
Yes, and I apologize. That was my mistake, and I let Bailey know that.
If you refresh, I don't know if you saved the stuff on the website. Kami re-uploaded some stuff to second. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Sarah.
No, I'd entertain a motion for item eight, please.
I move that we approve item eight as presented. And me too, second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussions? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Will you have to, will there be some time before you hear back, Sarah, on this, or is the B L M, since we do this?
Just going to push it through as quickly as possible, but we anticipate it'll be at least six weeks pushing this trail construction into next summer. Within the B L M area, we also observe a timeline that doesn't start for construction until the 1st of August each year because of some nesting raptors in the area.
Yeah. And when do you try to be done, every year?
Yeah, we hope to be completely done with all the trails next summer and also to have completed our primary traffic.
Today you'll be, this year you'll be done in October.
Oh, I'm sorry, this year hopefully will be done by October 20th, but we'll see how the weather treats.
Right, right. Awesome. Best laid plans. Thank you so much, Sarah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Item nine, present for approval, request for proposal for the purchase and installation of a security gate and badge system for the Road and Bridge lot and direct the clerk to advertise and publish the advertisement for bid. Rob, good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is for our security gate that we've been looking at for probably three years now. At the Road and Bridge, Bailey's found some funds that we can possibly use, so hopefully we can get this done and get a, you know, proposal and something that'll work for us. I think it'll be a great opportunity. We've, Anthony's got the TVs and stuff set up in the, in our community room there, so we'll have another office for a community space, meeting space. So with this gate with the badge system and stuff, it'll make it a lot easier for accessing our building as a, as a meeting place.
That's great.
And Rob, will the cameras go on as soon as the badge activates the gate?
I would have to visit with Adam more about that, but that's, I'm assuming that they're, we're looking at doing some things, and I don't know if the camera is actually involved in this or if it's going to be separate. It would also be pointed towards our fuel system also, fuel tanks, so.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, that way maybe we cover two, two areas with one, one, one bird's eye.
Any other questions, Rob? No, I'd entertain a motion for item nine, please.
I move that we approve item nine as presented and direct the clerk to advertise and publish the advertising for bid. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Present for approval, amendment to agreement for consulting services between Albany County and Hub International Mountain States Limited from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed 25,000 annually. Kayla?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is our annual agreement with Hub. They are our consultant that we use for our insurance. Pete, as Pete knows too, he's on the health insurance management team. They help us navigate through all of the insurance lingo. Pete probably knows it better than a lot of us, but he definitely, they definitely help us through that. There is no increase in the cost. It just extends it for a year. So it's the same amount that we have paid historically.
Thank you, Kayla. Commissioners, any questions?
Do we do that on a year-to-year basis?
Yeah. Yes.
I move that we approve item 10 as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 11, present for approval, letter of commitment. Thank you, Kayla, for the reconnecting community pilot discretionary grant funding application. Bailey, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is just a letter of support for our grant application. The application, this is the one that we're reapplying for with the 30th Street going all the way over the interstate, the bridge over the interstate, and then skyline going all the way through for the planning grant. Right now, our application narrative does currently sit with the state. The state has recently formed a grants department over there, basically, to help local governments manage the whole federal grant process. So they offered to review any applications, since we got denied the first time. I did want their eyes on it as well. Sometimes they know something that we're not, especially to get some Y dot feedback as well. That is due all next week, so we'd really just appreciate your letter at this point. And then I'll have it back in front of you to ratify on the first meeting of October, the application.
Thank you, Bailey. Commissioners, any questions? No, I'd entertain a motion for item 11.
I move that we approve item 11.
Second. It's been moved.
Abstain.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? You want to abstain from the vote, Terry, on that?
She spent a heck of a time spending her COVID-19 still. So this is one of the things that they did approve to get kind of those ads on Facebook about public health services, the vaccine, that they do offer vaccines. Like if you're traveling, get your vaccine, you know, things like that. So we want to work with them to do that.
Thank you, Bailey.
Bailey, is there a deadline on that, this COVID-19?
Yeah, June 2025. So just a quick history of that grant. That was the grant, half a million dollars. It was originally going to go towards new facility stuff when we were talking about getting public health into that building. With the delays of that, CDC came back and says, no, you can't use it for any remodeling whatsoever, any construction pieces. So that really cut us because that's what we had been saving for. We haven't touched it. We've also had turnover at the state level, that we have to re-explain this every time. So, and there's other things that we're trying to help improve, like the county as a whole, to do things, and they're fussy with that for us. So we're, I mean, that's why we're doing the ads at UW for the football games, because it's a good chunk of money. But we'd rather spend it elsewhere, but it's so limited. And Kim wants to try to spend as much as she can, and I'm supporting her, and we're just trying to figure out how we can do that for her.
So will you do advertising for the basketball games too?
Yes, that contract that you guys approved, last meeting. Yeah, it's football, men's and women's basketball for both seasons. So for this season and then next season, we got that snuck in because the work's going to be done to get to UW prior to July 1, or next year.
Thank you, Bailey. Are there no more questions? I entertain a motion for 12, please.
I move that we approve item 12 as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Bailey. Present for approval, item 13, request for proposal for the purchase and installation of a digital sign for the south side of the courthouse property and directly clerk to advertise and publish the advertising for bid. Adam, I see you online.
Commissioners, thank you for having me today. Before you is the RFP associated with the sign project that you guys put us as an initiative for. I can answer any questions related.
Commissioners, any questions? So Adam, will there be video capabilities on the sign, or how detailed will the sign be?
Um, I, yes, there will be video detail capable signage. Sorry, I'm breaking up a little bit here. I can't say how detailed. I mean, the goal set is to read within a decent distance of it. Part of the RFP will be pulling some of those specs to allow that allocation.
Awesome. Thank you, Adam. Commissioners, any other questions? I'd entertain a motion for item 13, please.
I move that we approve item 13 as presented and direct the clerk to advertise and publish the advertising for bid. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. 14, present for approval, updates to the Grants Office Policy and Procedure Handbook. Bailey, again, please.
Um, let's see. The grant policy procedures had not been updated since 2005. Our auditors were getting a little fussy with us and same with our funders, so we did need to do a nice overhaul of the policy procedures. I had our grants writers start with them, and then Jennifer cleaned them up for us, and that's what you have in your packets. There were a few things that I caught just yesterday, going through them again, and I don't know if you got those edited, those edits. I gave them to Jennifer. One of the, basically, these policy procedures are in line with what O M B, which is the federal guidelines, is today because they've updated theirs in the past 20 years and we just haven't. Um, it has a lot more emphasis on how we're doing sub-recipient monitoring because we are doing more of it and what the feds need us to have for any of those passed-through federal funding. But everything else is similar to what was in there or just cleaned up from O M B. There's, we did add in things like Buy America, Build America, Buy America, because that's in all of those right now. We added things in, like, any Um, because that's in all of those right now. Um, we added things in like any sub-recipient of ours, even contract of ours. Has to be, uh, registered in CM.gov. We have to make sure they're not debarr'd. Um, that's in there too. One of the things that I did wanna put into, and I do need your opinion on, is, um, indirect costs. When we have a grant that allows indirect costs, I do feel like we need to take advantage of it, and I don't think we are. Right now, we kind of willy-nilly, we talk to the department and if they can't usually use the full amount that's advertised, I'm like, okay, then we're gonna put an indirect cost. And then I bring it to you guys. Right now, the, the county does not have a negotiate, a federal negotiated indirect cost rate. That's fine. We don't need one. We can, today, we can still ask for ten percent of the award amount. For indirect cost. By October one, it moves actually up to fifteen percent. I would like to put in the policies that if indirect cost is allowed by grants, that the county takes ten percent. Then that goes into the general fund, just like all of our other indirect costs goes into the general fund, not specifically towards anything. But it does cost money to run these programs, no matter how much the funding is. Um, you can take drug court, for instance. They're almost entirely grant-funded, but it still costs IT time, it still costs my time, it still costs mail, you know, things like that. Um, so it's something I would like you guys to consider.
Putting it into the general fund since there's so many.
Correct.
Entities I help with.
Correct.
But for general revenue.
Yes. Talking to, uh, Sandra Bay at Laramie County, she's the Laramie County Grants Manager. She brought up that it would be very wise of us to have it just in our policies at a set percent. Then that percent cannot be changed. If it allows indirect cost, that allows up to the ten percent or whatever you choose, we're asking for it. And then that is cut out of the program. So.
And Commissioners, if that's something that you'd like to add to this, we would add it in the, there's an indirects cost section. That's five, section five point six. So it would be five point six point one, where we would just say. Indirect, while we don't have, it says in there currently that we don't have a negotiated indirect cost rate. We would just add a line that says Albany County's indirect cost rate where it's allowed by the funder is ten percent. Or whatever percentage you would like to.
New change in October?
No, so the federal guidelines are changing in October. The new OMB guidelines go into effect October one, which allows us to take up to. Fifteen percent de minimis. But I. I don't wanna take a lot from the programs. I do have a little heartache about that, but it also still costs money to run these programs.
Right, right.
For the county. So I'm suggesting ten percent, no matter what the feds is. They could raise it again next year, I don't know. But right now, as it sits till September thirtieth, we're allowed to have up to ten percent.
I just wanna be clear on something, uh, Bailey and Jennifer. So if we put in, um, ten percent. A grant could say what they allow maximum indirect cost is eight percent or five percent. So then we're stuck at that for the grant.
Correct.
If it doesn't say anything specified, then we can ask for as much as ten percent.
Correct. I actually just, um, was looking over, uh, Heather's SOR grant yesterday, actually. It's never one that has allowed indirect costs in the past. We found out we can ask up to ten percent in indirect cost. So Heather and I are gonna meet next week.
Yeah, just do it.
To do it. So there are grants that'll say, no, you can only ask this much. Um, but if it's a direct federal grant especially, it's gonna be what OMB says is the, is the max. Um.
Oh, the federal grant said you take fifteen percent.
Yes.
And we only have ten percent, then we can't take fifteen percent.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you guys place in the, the reason I need, I want in policy procedures is it's going to be less of a red flag for auditors and our funders.
Sure.
If it, if it fluctuates, like drug court, we're actually doing only five percent, but IT's getting a grant, we're gonna take fifteen percent. That gets us in trouble. So I'm trying to be consistent across the board.
Okay, that makes sense.
If you wanna set fifteen percent, set fifteen percent, but that can't go into effect till October one, and these then probably should not go into effect till October one.
Right. I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking if that's, if that's a possibility and we don't know what, what grants are be coming down the road. There might be some that we really could use more, but we don't have to take that. What's the average that you've seen that they allow?
Well, ten, ten percent is right now. Um.
No, I'm just thinking, if you're really crummy.
No, and one of the things, um, I guess I do wanna mention too is, we always have the option of doing a federal negotiated rate. When I first got here, Ty had a intern on that project to see what our rate could possibly be. That rate only came out to be fourteen percent. When you add up kind of all those extra costs that the county's putting towards these grants. Would be only about fourteen percent. So that's what she was assuming we could only negotiate, have our negotiated rate be. So the ten percent, lot less work, don't have to renew it every year, seemed better. Also, every training I go to, all the trainers are like, unless you're a university or, you know, higher education institution. Just go with the de minimis. Like it, it getting you what you need.
Okay.
Um, so that's what I've been recommended at, at a bunch of things.
I know, I had no idea. That's why I wanted.
No, I'm just trying to fill you in on what I do know.
I mean, we could change the handbook for me to later do.
Absolutely. I mean, and, um, there's actually, I think we put in here. I know we put it in here somewhere. Um, federal law requires that if you have over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal funding. That you do have to go have a single audit. We do that anyways, we're always over that. OMB actually in those same changes is doing, if you have a million dollars, will go into effect October one. So that's something that we will have to change to, um, when that comes out. I try, I was trying to get these done by July one, just didn't quite happen.
Jennifer, process question on, if we put five point six, well, point one as suggested, do they have to go back out? Since that's a substantive change, or is that not a substantive change?
Um, I would say that it's not a substantive change. It only applies to internal policy. So the only ones that would affect were other county agencies. It doesn't affect the public at all. So if we wanted to make that change, we can make that change.
Okay, and then I have a, just kind of a wordsmithing here. Um, I know what's the intent. Uh, but when you get it, uh, on two point five, if the grant is awarded, the commissioners must accept the award. And no worker funds pursuant to the grant can be allocated or spent prior to the award and commissioner acceptance. The problem I have is the commissioners must accept the award, and I know what you're, what's trying to be said that before any, so if I were to re. My understanding would be if the grant is awarded, the commissioners must first accept the award before worker funds pursuant to the grant. Can be allocated or spent prior to the award and the commissioner acceptance. I know what that means, but it does say the commissioners must accept. The award and.
I, I'm happy to make that change, Pete, to say that they must first accept the award. And no worker funds pursuant can be allocated or spent prior to the award and commissioner acceptance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The other change while we're talking about changes from that draft that you have is. Um, we've been making an effort to ensure that we are putting. When we have sub- recipients, that we're putting insurance requirements in the contract language for the sub- recipients. So we're going to, we would also like to make a change. I'm scrolling here. Oh, it's in ten. I was scrolling the wrong way.
Okay.
Um, we have a line in section ten point three, it's ten point three point. One point seven, I think. It says other supplemental requirements required by the county. We'd like to make that, it was point six, we'd like to make that point seven and add a line that says, um. Insurance requirements consistent with the grant funds. So if their service, if the sub- recipient is providing services. Then we wanna ensure that we have insurance requirements in there so that our sub- recipient has insurance. Um, to cover any errors and omissions or any of those things. If we're just purchasing things, it's less of a concern. But we'd also like to add that line. And again, not a substantive change, cause we have that catch-all language in there. It's just specifically delineating the insurance piece as a reminder to everybody.
And then also, if, to make all these changes, do we need to do the wording of five point six point one for the indirect costs? Or if we give you a, hey, it's ten percent and it goes to the general fund, is that good enough? Or do we need to put the wording?
I would ask our attorney.
If you, if you just tell, if you can just tell us what you want percentage-wise. We'll throw a language in there that accomplishes that. You, if you have specific wording, feel free. If you don't, I will put something together that incorporates what you'd like it to be.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
A couple others, just quick change in, um, eleven for grant reporting. Um, eleven, one, three, one, four, and one, five. Um, those are actually things the grants office does. Those are not left to the department. Um, so we did just change that language, just so you're aware, that I don't want them to be responsible for that. The, the grants office does those things. But I think everything else was just some minor typos.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions? All right, um, it seems like five point six point one would be ten percent and going to the general fund. Do you all agree with that? Those percentages are where it goes? Okay, and then, uh, the insurance requirement at ten point three point one point seven, um. We don't need to make a million, three million or any of those determinations. They just have to have it if it's required.
Yeah, and, uh, sometimes the grants will be specific about what they want, like our state funders will. Um, but majority of the time Jennifer just tells me what I shipped it in there. I take her legal advice, so.
We do it with consistent with the grant, when the grant provides us information, and otherwise we just have some standard. Um, language that we use in there, and it adjusts, we adjust the insurance requirements amounts based on. The amount of that sub-recipient contract as well. We don't wanna require a million dollars worth of insurance for a thirty thousand dollar contract.
Yeah, awesome. Jennifer, you need anything else from us?
I do not think so. Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, anything? Yeah, entertain a motion for item fourteen if there are no further questions.
I move that we approve the updates to the grants office policy and procedure handbook as amended tonight. Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Bailey. Appreciate it. Fifteen, present for approval, updated service order forms with visionary broadband for fiber internet services for twenty-three seventy-four West Jefferson. The location of the emergency management center and the amount of sixty-three thousand, three twenty-five, forty-four to be paid from the. American Rescue Plan Revenue Replacement Funding. Adam, please. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Commissioners, for seeing this today. Um, this is the same private fiber services and tenure term set. Um, that we have with the rest of the offices, uh, paying out in bulk from the ARPA funding. Um, the current EOC is. Uh, the interconnect is utilized via microwave circuits. Um, we will continue to retain that. This will add fiber services. Uh, to the service center, um, with no construction cost needed.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, an entertaining motion for fifteen, please.
I move that we, um, approve item fifteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Sixteen percent for approval, updated service order forms with visionary broadband for fiber internet services. For the Roden Ridge, Roden Bridge Building, Annex Public Health Building, and Albany County Courthouse. Adams, please, again.
These are updated service orders to pull the service orders within the grant spec, um, so that we can continue utilizing that fund set. And make everything essentially amendable to all parties involved.
Commissioners, any questions? Money for this is coming from what, Adam, can you remind me?
ARPA, these, these are still ARPA funds, um, no change in the funding and the tenure is still the same, uh, term set. It's just updated wording.
Okay.
We, the original contract was not what the grant needed to see. Um, so we needed to. Make a few adjustments. Um, but the, these ones, all these amendments are in the original ARPA. That's why it was broken out into two separate, because this other needs to come from the ARPA Revenue Replacement.
Super, thank you. Commissioners, no other questions? I take a, a motion for item sixteen, please.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion?
Uh, Pete, those, those will be going to you for signature, just as an FYI.
Okay. Email.
DocuSign probably. Are they going through DocuSign, Adam?
Um, I will follow up, uh, you'll see instructions from me if they're coming electronic.
Okay.
Okay. No worries, just call me, I'm in town.
Appreciate it.
But moved in seconded, seeing, hearing, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And seventeen, present for approval, quote from Civic Plus for an authentication add-on. Adam, please.
Um, this is an add-on module. Um, there's a small integration cost and then a small carried cost forward to carry the, the integration set. Uh, this allows us to use our county identity as the authentication source for, uh, logging into the backend of the website. The idea and the, the goal is to simplify and one less login credential set that employees have to maintain. Hopefully encourage more usage and, uh, updated content on the website.
Thank you, Adam. Commissioners, any questions? If not, an entertaining motion for seventeen, please.
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Uh, let's get back to the number seven, if we could. The consent agenda. Jennifer, do you have any? Information for us on seven, for the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Commissioners, I reached out to David Gertsch, um, and asked him about it. And he said that the information with the certificates that was presented was in compliance with all of the regulations. And he does not have any concerns with those applications and zoning certificates.
As that takes over that. Thanks, Jennifer, for checking.
You're welcome.
Uh.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Eighteen, approve payroll vouchers for September twenty twenty-four. I'd entertain that motion, please.
I move that we approve vouchers for, um, September twenty twenty-fourth.
Um, I second that, but I want payroll.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Nobody gets paid this. Yeah.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, then all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item nineteen, uh, adjourned. I'd entertain a motion for adjourned.
So moved. Second.
It's moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
That motion carries. See no more business before the Albany County Commission on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we'll call the meeting adjourned and we'll see you in two weeks for our first meeting of October. Thank you all.